We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then Dan will lead us in a prayer.
Goodbye, head. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you watch over the activities of this council this evening, that we can uphold the rules of our city, that we can talk the business of this city and do it all to your glory. Dear Lord, we just pray that you watch over the families of those lost down in Virginia, that we can get past these situations in our country where people do things wrong like that. In your name we pray.
Okay, everyone should have got a copy of the minutes from May 20th.
Motion to approve and suspend.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda. Are there any additions or?
The motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, under 5A, annexation discussion, maps.
More engineering produced a couple of maps for you guys to look at. I don't know if you wanted to discuss anymore, just take some time and look at them and come up with ideas. Eric, do you want to add next?
Is this up to date?
This is up to date.
This is the, I guess... Fertilizer.
Yeah.
My inner base.
Yeah. Yeah, it shows that here they just didn't put the line around it for some reason.
So the orange line?
The orange line is the inner base addition, yeah. But it's supposed to be...
Not on this other stuff here?
No, no, it's the heavy black line, but they just didn't get it carried down here like it was supposed to be, so. But yeah, that is annexed in the whole inner base addition.
So does everyone need time to look at the maps before we discuss annexation on any parts or?
Yeah, I got, I got all kinds of areas, I guess, like marked up, I guess, on my map. Want to talk about it.
Okay.
I guess we start, you know, in the, in the south, south, I guess, like west part town. You know, where I guess, Center's got like their, like their, I guess, I guess, some bulk tanks. Just, just, I guess... Just, I guess, east of the, of the, of the old RV park, let's say. You know, that area is, is, is not even in the limits.
Yes, question, are you just going with the quarter line or are you going all the way?
Well, yeah, you know, I was looking at that, I mean, I, you know, if you go all the way down, down the quarter line, I think that would probably be fair. Because there are other, other than, like far, and it's down there, I mean, not really served by us, I don't think. Could be wrong. You know, you know, something on the Miller land, I mean, I don't think... You know, at this time, you know, I mean, maybe just like leave that all out, but on all that we did, I guess, like sewer, sewer, I guess, improvements, just, just in case that one goes, I guess, fell down, but...
We went down to that quarter line, Monty. Does that include the residents to the south?
It would only include the first ones there. I think it would get down all the way to the...
Yeah, there's, yeah. So, so yeah, this area right here.
They just wanted to go the triangle then?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Okay.
Then I guess while we have that up, you know, of course, we're gonna do like this area. I don't know how far over we're gonna go. You know, Steve, I guess, wants us to give him a, him a, you know, his approach, I guess, off the road, going then like west into his, like property.
West and east.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, that, I would say yes, like that, like for sure, but I don't know how far over. Yes, you guys are gonna go.
Wonder how much he owns. Does he own much of the west side of the, that road?
Yeah, just, just up, just up, just up to that, that county road that goes back to my in-laws. And then he's got that, that nice little area right across from Jimmy's, where those trailers and shed are. There's, there's like a little triangle of land there as well. And then, and then it's Christman and then Canales.
And then, yeah. So, back by the house builders, there's, I guess, a garage back in here. It's not part, I mean, they do have to use, I guess, urban, like roads where we get down there. And then, you know, this area here, is, is which is, I guess, like western, I think, tighter's area. And I mean, really, that's kind of the same thing as what the Meisner, like property is. It's probably not gonna be like water, like ran there, or sewer, but...
Which area?
Right here, this one right there.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, but it's actually longer, it's just not...
Oh, okay. So... And then up in this area, almost like there was a lot or something, or a building that's not in there. I don't think this. That dotted line seems to cross, just on this bend right here. I don't know if that's...
I'm not sure. Newburgers? Probably on the north end there.
On this map here, it's, it's cut off, you know, it's cut off, but I don't think this.
Up that closer to the well, it would say, it looks like it is here.
So that, right there, yes.
Are we talking northwest, northwest of all of the... Because we've assessed the properties back there in the past.
Yes, yeah.
Back there were, there's, there's a couple of shops, you know, back there.
I know we've assessed them in the past.
Where Swanson has, he owns his shops back there.
Well... Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Because he's just on the central strip of the road, so...
Yeah. You know, it's hard to see, but it looks like there's a lot. It's our number five here. It's up in this area someplace, must be right up here. Like Mark, Mark has a lot, but then, then the boundary there.
It does look like it ends, and then you see what appears to be the shed, just to the city. Right over here. Back, back behind on the Mercer, back right next to Swanson's shop.
Maybe it's that right there, one.
Further to the left, further to the west, I think. Right, right there. You see that top shop that, that looks like that's the city limit?
Yeah. That's shoes.
Oh, shoes.
So then if you stop, I think, on this map, it shows like this has a lot right here, but then it's not in. Over there, yeah.
Oh, I see where you're standing.
Yeah.
Where, yeah, five.
Yeah.
Well, there's two lots of five.
Yeah.
The north one you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then I know at one time, people were gonna talk about, you know, the golf course too. I don't know if that's something.
If, if you annex in the golf course, you have to have your, your city continuous up to, you can't have like a gap and add another. And then we would have to go everything between then.
Well, there's a little bit of talk about annexing in just the bike path to the golf course.
I think Pat found out he can't just strip it next.
Oh, okay.
We'd have to take more property than just the path.
Just a question, if you annex high east, because the rest of the property would be Millers and, Millers and Canales. That'd be the, that'd be the remaining properties to the golf course.
From...
Oh, yeah, those guys. Because I know that, I know that from, one of the things that, at the golf course, that I talked about is the fact that, you know, if it was annexed to the city, at least then the penny sales tax would come this way, where now it's all going. The one they're not charging. You know? And at, at, that back a while ago when I was on that board, everybody's seen terrible of that. Having that.
So probably all the property owners.
Yeah, the property owners and the golf course.
Yeah.
So then I guess besides that, the only thing, one thing I have yet is just, just, I guess, the south railroad tracks. Which, you know, that we, I guess, like talked about too.
You mean that glacier park?
Yeah, a glacier park, and then you got, you know, like pretty much from there all the way over to be, I guess, a fertilizer area there.
But there is a portion of that glacier park that's, am I looking at that road?
It's all north of that road.
Oh.
And that, so we're on the Miller land, we should draw the line on that.
Yeah. This section. I would just say, I mean, just like this area, not the whole thing.
Yeah.
Or something, yeah.
That vertical green one is the section line right there.
This is the section line.
Yeah. So would you just go follow that section line? And you still have...
You still got...
Those three structures.
Home there, you know.
See, I was wondering if you wanted to go to this quarter line, go this way then too? Or just do this quarter line going east to match up?
Yeah.
So you could just go straight across the quarter line.
I'll keep in mind, protesting out.
Yeah.
That owner could take out everything.
Pretty much. Pretty much, yeah.
That's where, that's more than everything else.
I'm just gonna say that, a little more than that.
That's why I would recommend doing smaller areas.
I suspect you're gonna get a protest anyway.
Well, some of it, yeah, but I mean, like this, along the Antelope Creek. I think, you already know one of them's in.
Yeah.
And I don't think the other one has any real objection either, so.
As long as he can solve. It's time to make signs.
Have a board, do that, draw.
We can, we can mark up a map.
Consensus beside that. You wanna get some...
Okay, we can have that.
So then, so then, so then I guess, so then I guess, for us to draw then, like the boundary line, does it have to follow a property line or some other, some other, I guess, like survey?
No, if you look at the legal, the correct legal description of our boundaries. Paragraph, it's a page long.
You'd basically have to survey it to get your...
Survey everything's description.
I know when they annexed me and they, they set pins just on the, the section that got annexed into the city. And that's not all my land up there, it's just a portion that got annexed, yeah.
So then I guess we would have to then make a boundary if we annexed and something that we drew line.
Yeah.
And it's sort of, it would have to be surveyed and...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we can just have more engineering?
Well, we can, you know, we can sketch it up and then go to them with some information.
Okay.
Or, or can.
It'd be helpful to know what acreage is, so you know what it would take to...
But you only broke...
Unless you identify tracks, I'm not even sure. I guess we could look at that. Or a wheel out there or something.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion on the annexation maps? Okay, under 6A, we have the fireworks display permit.
Pat, Pat, when it's gone, I missed Carl with this afternoon, so I don't have a signature on it, but they're proposing to do it for evening at the night third. From dusk till, well, basically it is left to stop by 11, but they figured that would be less of a headache for those that would otherwise be working now, most of them will have their holiday off. Or a majority will have their holiday off.
Okay.
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? If not, do we need to have a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next, we have a fireworks sales permit, memory fireworks.
Wayne Hermes, it's again working with memory fireworks to, to the sales, fireworks sales at the All Seasons Arena. Casey has reviewed the application, seasonal issues with it, so it's in your, in your court.
Motion approved. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, 7A, drone ordinance. Y'all should have received a copy of the ordinance on that. Time to wrap it over?
I was telling Nancy earlier, I'd give you the information from the Mercer County Mutual Airport Board on someone to contact at the state aerodynamics to see if there are certain things that we can or cannot do as a city. And I haven't heard back from him, so, and then it would obviously have to go to Pat.
And were, were we also waiting on some additional feedback from, from the airport board?
If they have any additional stuff, yeah, they're, they're meeting. I'm not sure which night they're meeting, but they'll be meeting here in June.
Okay.
So I wasn't sure if you wanted to actually treat this as a first reading or just, or just have it for information, and, I mean, we could still tweak it in between no matter what. If we do the first reading now, we could do the second reading, the first meeting in July, rather than two weeks from now, and then you have time for further input and...
Do we need a motion on it?
We need a motion to treat the first reading when the ordinance hits.
So, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? If there is no second...
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion?
So then, so then, so then, if I read this right, you can get a DUI? Has you been, has you been, has you been on a fire drone? Is that right?
I'm ready.
I thought that's what I read in...
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah. Wind zone, wind away to or something.
Same as, same as the vehicle. It's gonna be a DUI drone.
I see it on that insurance commercial. They're gonna run the drone through the guy's windshield, so. It could, it could happen.
And then two, I guess, another part that I don't like is how that, you know, government in the city, they don't have to follow these rules. You know, and I think that we gotta follow, I think they should follow too.
And that may be something that we can redline, some of that language out of there.
Because it can be changed before the second reading, right?
Yeah.
Sure.
May I ask, at what point is this published to the public?
Once it's approved.
If fully approved or the public gets...
It's published after it's approved.
Do we have any other discussion? Roll call.
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
Miller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Higher. Okay, the next one we had on there is a junk vehicle ordinance. I think everyone's had a chance to go through that. Does this also need a, a first and second reading or?
Yes, yeah. This is adding another section to our public nuisance.
This, this would be considered second reading though?
No.
For this one here?
This would be first reading as well.
Okay. I'd make a motion to treat this as first reading for chapter 12, public nuisance.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
So then I guess what was wrong, except our old, our old ordinance, you know, it reads that if you have a car sitting for, I mean, I guess, 30 days.
What, what I got out of this one here is that, that as a governing group, we can act quicker. It seems that the, the existing ordinance, because it just drags and drags and drags, it feels like you're never getting anywhere. So, did you guys read the same thing on there? It seems like this one here that you, you've got your time out there, the contact, and then you can...
There's still like a, like a 20-day waiting period, I think, you know. And I guess if we're not gonna follow our, our old, I guess, like ordinance, I guess what's gonna make this step even work, I guess. And then two, on our old and ordinance, you know, you know, talk about this, you know, like junk, I guess, equipment, like other kind of like vehicles. But now it's just, it's just automobiles, you know.
That's still in, you know, this is just adding a section directly with the cars.
So I printed that off, the whole thing that you sent, I didn't see in the other code.
The other part of the public nuisance hasn't changed at all, we just added the junk vehicles. We added a whole new section, just do it with abandoned vehicles, not junk vehicles. All the other public nuisances stayed the same.
But on the old ordinance, so on the chapter that we changed, that's where it talked about, about the equipment and everything else. And now, as I see, this new, this new, like language is gonna, is gonna be the move.
Some of that, some of the equipment stuff is also under the public places and property, dealing with some of the other equipment stuff too. So we might have to work between the two different sections to, to address all of the, all of the things, like the equipment that, that you're referring to. Like, well, there is that other section that also deals with leaving stuff for unkept or whatever, so.
You're, you're tied with junk stuff, like it might be an implement versus a vehicle.
Yeah, well, that, you know, for boats, camper, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of like boats and casters, it seems like they're okay. And I mean, you know, on the streets, you're not supposed to leave like something in person's street for two days. And now we got campers, you know, we got cords running along the campers and stuff, and that's the move, I guess. Here you're camping, so.
I know with the enforcement of that, with the summer, when they're going back and forth on the weekends is...
Yeah.
After 48 hours, you need to move the camper foot and...
Unfortunately, that one, I'm definitely going to be wondering, going back and forth from the weekend to the week.
And all I have in the air, he keeps it plugged in, he's got a refrigerator stocked in there, and instead of emptying it every week when it comes home from there.
But is that dealt with in here, or is it in another section of the ordinance, public nuisance?
Well, that's the parking.
That's part of it.
That's a part of it.
Right.
But I hear what Casey's talking about, we need to ensure that there is language still that addresses some of that other junk.
Abandon, yeah.
Abandoned, not just motor vehicles, but boats, potato pickers, whatever it might be.
Is there anything that says how many a person can have? Are you talking that if you wanna have 12 vehicles in your yard and you own a small license, it's okay? I don't park all over the grass and I'm bored and it's perfectly fine if you're licensed, or? or does that address somewhere in there?
We don't have any limits, just the number of vehicles you can hold.
No.
Not at this point.
There wasn't any limits on the, on the old one either.
No, no.
No.
And there's another area that I don't like, is that it says in there that the towing and the storage of a vehicle, let's say, will go to the last, last and, last and, I guess, registered by order, and I mean, I got a true story here, just like last week. Mercer County, Mercer County, Mercer County, I guess, Mercer County, I guess, sheriff, I guess, told us, you know, and said, 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 you know, your boat? Your boat is gonna get towed, and so then, looking at my daughter says, well, my dad had sold that last fall, so now, this ordinance, now, I'm on the hook for this?
I see covered by proof of sale.
I agree with Casey, I think, so our party of possession should be the one liable, not the one that's registered on it. People live junk ones, don't re-register those.
If it's left in front of my house, I'm in possession?
It's left in front of your house, you probably will move it.
Probably, but, but then I would be liable under that if it's possession.
Yeah. It's open, but I'm agreeing, I just agree that it shouldn't be the last registered owner, because they don't change certificates of title for a junk vehicle.
Yeah.
So maybe this one needs to look dead a little bit more before we act on it, some wording change?
Well, yeah.
Well, just like the other one, you have that...
Have that first here, reading, and then tweak some language in there again?
Just, just because we call it first reading tonight, if, if the next time we have it on the docket for potential for a second reading, if we're at a point where we're still not happy with the language, we don't have to move on it, at that particular time, we're gonna continue to tweak it till we get it where we like it, and then carry on with the path forward.
I guess if this does pass, are we going to allow, allow, allow us, like residents to build more than, like buildings, and then, then I guess, like keep the stuff inside? And, I mean, we really don't have any area in town, you know, for, for them, for them, for them, for them, for them, people to buy lots, or to put up buildings, and, and like one other building code that I think that probably needs to be changed is that, you know, if you build a garage in town, you know, it's gonna be like an eight footer, like nine foot sidewalk, you know, while, you know, campers and stuff, they're all taller, I think if we would, we then allow everyone to build this taller than this, like Rogers, all stuff gonna be on the street, or us helping the yard.
Okay, on the junk vehicle, did we have a motion on it already?
Yeah.
And a second?
And a second, yes.
Okay. Let's do a roll call.
Keller?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Stern?
No.
Wolf?
Hi.
And you're gonna get together with Casey and try and...
Yeah, we're gonna get together with Casey, if anybody else has any concerns, just email and do me, and redraft it, you get it back out there to a pat review, somehow get it out so the public knows what we're doing.
Okay.
Do it on our website or something.
Okay, 8A, building permit with variance? Hold what?
Yeah. He has a very nice little shed in this market, his brother's got a strat, he wants to move here, um, seven foot sidewall, so the right size, um, that area of town requires a twenty-five foot setback from backyard, um, he is requesting a fifteen foot variance, so then he can have it just ten feet from the backyard, um, the neighbor to the back, their house is really far away from the property line, um, so I don't think that'll be the problem. He is gonna be off the easement far enough at ten feet, so that'll be fine, and he did get a moving permit for it to be moved into town, and it's applied for what it looks like, so...
It looks like it's in good shape.
Mm-hmm. And where he wants to put it, it fits the size of the yard and everything, just...
More of the wishes of the board.
Where does it, I mean, it's kinda hard to, on that map, Mark, do you have, Mark, is it in the...
That was in our past, but then...
Yeah.
So if you look at that, that triangular, yeah, there you go, the white square there.
Okay. Okay, okay, oh.
Can it stop with me that big, I'll just...
Wishes to the board.
Make a motion that we approve the building permit with variance request.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So was, I guess, was it, I guess, you know, I guess, like mentioned to Brock about, like moving it out, so that when, when, I guess, like need a variance or anything?
Yeah, because, um, otherwise you have to have it twenty-five feet from the backyard, and he wants to move it, so that's why he needs a variance. Just so it doesn't come to be up the middle of the yard.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Pat?
Hi.
Keller?
Hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Motion carried. A building permit with variance for Weston Steel Builders. Aisling Pioneer Apartments?
Um, they're, I don't even remember the beat, but it looks to me like we wanna build about a foot spot with the property line, to the garages, um, did go out and double check the forewards, the north forward is twelve and a half feet, and the south comes in a half feet, so in reality, the building will only be, you know, thirteen feet on the north side, and a little ten feet on the south side from the roof. The square footage fits the size of the lot, that'll be okay, I guess it's just up to you guys if you're willing to let it that close to the property line, it's a little long to get put off to the property line. On the south. And it's eight feet off the back, so that's fine, because it's a seven and a half foot setback there, it's just the side yards better, basically six and a half feet, two floors to the street. But I think that's the only way they can get that many garages to fit.
Will the commissioner let me speak first, Mr.?
Sure, that'd be great.
Oh, we built, when we built this, uh, we didn't add the garages right away, because we wanted to see all the tenants' views, and the number one comment we get from upcoming tenants is, we would rent there if we get a garage, and we do have people that have moved in there already, knowing that we said yes, we wanna try to build garages. Eight is where the money pencil's out, and it also helps us with the grant from the state. The grant from the state was about half of the project, we were able to build that project less than our budget, so we would literally have to take out money and give it back to the state, um, it's much better to get our tenants in there, and it helps us with that fifty-fifty split with that grant, so it's a win-win for us. Where the picture, why the numbers seem a little off here, is in the past, that building in the north side was the front, and then you had different variances, we have reversed that, so it makes it, we're actually lining up with that north side, but it, because that was the original entrance, it's the one that has the odd variance on the back, but we've looked at the lot, we've driven by, um, because that angle piece is so long, it really doesn't seem to cut the view, so we'd like the eight, because that's where the financialy emphasis is on. Any questions, Mr.?
It'll be coming in from the north.
Oh, we're gonna keep the same driving data.
Come in.
If you come in here, that's not in here, and actually, that building comes down about here and up, so the building here is actually down a little farther, but we're gonna keep that same safe driving of just coming in one way and out the back.
Okay.
Much safer. The one thing we're, we're probably gonna do, what we're intending to do, is put concrete here, so we have somewhere a pile of snow, to make it easier, bring loose snow, and then straight through if we have to take it, because we're probably gonna end up trucking some snow out at some point in the year, so we'll do it a little different, we won't have this as an official entrance, but we'll have the ability to drive a mower through, straight through the empty snow when we need it, so it'll help us a lot with that.
So then, is there, I guess, a sidewalk then?
Uh, there is, yeah, there's a sidewalk on, on the north side. We're actually gonna make that wider, because we're gonna bring it right up to the building, there's not, there, it'd be like a three foot strip of grass on that north side, we just don't wanna deal with it looking terrible, so we're gonna have an extra wide sidewalk. And the sidewalk that's been there is really old, and it's one of the smaller ones, it'd look better if it was fresh.
Make a motion to accept the variance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? If there is none, roll call.
Keller?
Hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Motion carried. Reports, water sewer?
Uh, the only thing I got to, I don't know, I guess, say is, uh, the crew is, the crew is, I guess, like busy right now, I guess, uh, locates the building, building, I guess, season, I guess, must be, must be starting, so, it's on that.
Okay. Street cemetery?
Uh, the only thing, the only thing that I got is, um, we got the mower back, uh, behind, behind the tractor, and everything was, uh, caught Dave last week, and everything's, I don't think it was adjusted properly from the factory, uh, everything was under warranty, and it's, seems to be working really well right now, so...
Waste fire?
I made warrant for, for the fire station to just make a trip by there to see the modifications that have occurred, uh, they put some new, better ceiling doors in over there, they're, they're modifying the building so that, uh, it's going to become more and more energy efficient, which will provide some payback to, to their budget and the city ultimately, but also the, the parking spaces and stuff over there, take a look at those. And then, uh, forestry, we had the city Arbor Day just last week, Wednesday, and from all indications, it went, it went well, so I suspect there may be a story in the paper coming up.
Okay. HCD?
I really don't have anything, hey, let's see.
Okay, and I had nothing on finance and busing. 11A, award garbage truck bid?
Did we have three bids?
Yes.
When I read that, maybe, maybe I read it wrong, but in what you sent out, were there, were there differences in the last two, from the same provider?
The same, just the specs, we took the spec, all of them did, got it?
Okay.
One, he followed the specs, one, he did it as he respected.
I see.
You gone through them all?
Yeah, my recommendation would be the Nelson International. That's a little bit, that's what I'm correct.
The Nelson International?
Move toward the bid to, uh, Nelson, Nelson International, for some of, uh, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and thirty, thirty-five dollars.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Stern?
Hi.
Keller?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Motion carried. Oh, okay, I was gonna ask on a new business. Hi, Jasmine?
So, I'm just here to talk to you guys about the two possible locations for my job because I have finished fundraising and went over my goals, so I'm ready to install whenever you guys have somewhere to put it.
Okay, and, and?
I guess I'm not sure what the next patch for us with the city as far as that, as law to North Star One, it goes to zoning planning, I think, um, I don't, anything if I speak to those concerned, just up the temporary use permit or anything along those lines?
It's not a temporary, it's a conditional, it's a single challenge. So as you know, she's been working on her project, she had talked to the city about it, um, about these lots kinda on the end where that cul-de-sac was for a while, um, ways back here, and she was told to go sleep with the park boards, we spoke with the park board, um, they approved a, a different location over by Baseball Diamond, um, there was some concerns recently about that, so, and it was kinda brought back over again to this other area, um, over here, um, I guess we weren't able to attend the last meeting, she had some...
I was actually giving this up for my, off her, her my first book, so...
Actually busy with that, her fundraising, that side of it, so, um, I guess location wise, you guys are looking at near where that tree is, is that right? And in this, this lot, okay, that's one we kinda wanted to clarify on that, so, um, the condition, what time do I remember looking for that?
We get it published already?
Yeah, so the meeting will be on the seventeenth.
Okay, and how long is that good for, you know, that, sort of a license or...
Conditional use permit, it's in definite, right?
Yeah.
Those are conditions.
Yeah.
So the long term, like a lease essentially?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's not a short term.
As long as the conditions are met.
Okay, do you know what the conditions of the area? Okay.
At least, you'll wanna be at the zoning meeting, right?
Seven, correct?
Yeah.
Seventeenth, okay. Sounds good.
And did we get them to sign the permit yet?
What's that?
The permit itself, did we have to fill that out yet, did that one or gone or?
No. Okay.
So that would be the next step, that's one to, I'm in zoning on the seventeenth.
Yeah, have you filled out the permit, and then we'll have our meeting, I'll try to get the conditions and everything, and report it to you if you want to supply this.
Okay, and then after that, she also plans on attending the purple meeting on Monday, so we can go over and actually take a look at it. so we can go over and actually take a look at, um, onsite, and then make those final determinations of what we need to do, work out the, the details, so to speak, as far as the fencing and gates and everything, like that signage and the park boards, so.
Do you, do you need any of that level of detail for the content of the conditional use permit?
Yeah, yeah, like pictures, just a drawing to show what else. Yeah, get in part of the permit.
Because the city owns the land, and the park district will be involved, the city and the park district are separate government entities, so they're going to enter into a joint powers agreement for how this is operated. So both the park district and the city will have to consider who's responsible for what. So that's what the park district has to decide before they give the final conclusion. You know, what are you guys gonna be doing, do the maintenance or more, whatever it is? What's the city doing besides providing the land itself, if anything?
Especially the park board, where the city would not be obligated to do any maintenance on it. So park board will blow it, um, I think the girl's thoughts, I hope, are, are gonna do a little upkeep in these projects and additions, but I think park board is...
If you guys, if you damn just draft, it just gets the most, uh, Monty, and Monty can get them to be, you know? If, if everything's approved, then we'll get that agreement put together.
So then ultimately, if everything goes well, we can probably act on this on the seventeenth? I'm assuming that's what kind of, what you were...
Yep, we're looking for, trying to move forward with things, so.
And one of the tests will be completed on by September, so.
Yep. So her plan was to basically have everything she can ready after the Fourth of July timeframe, um, um, as far as ordered and onsite. We're just looking for volunteers after that. So her plan would be after the Fourth at some point, doing installation of everything, so.
Okay.
You know, I guess, like, last meeting, we got brought up about, about asking the, I guess, property owners on the north side, you know, if they would have a problem, I guess, what they're not, is up and done, or?
Well, there's nobody that lives in that old church, so it would just be kitty corner from there, yeah.
Yeah.
Have we talked to, uh?
I haven't talked to them. But they do have a dog, so.
Okay, so that's all we need to do with that at this time?
Yep.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have approval of the bills.
Move to approve the bills.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Stern. Kat.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried. If there's no other business, meeting adjourned.